This meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Do I have, Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D. Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French. Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Oh, did you start to say something? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. French apologized for her absence. She had a last minute emergency that did not allow her to attend this evening. And with that, I will pass it on to superintendent's comments. We welcome Dr. Whitley and we are so excited to have you sitting up here at the table instead of in the audience and to what the possibilities are for our future. So thank you for joining us here today.
Thank you, I'm very excited. As you know, we are gearing up for the start of the school year. Betsy and I, our communications director, have been working diligently to plan for convocation. Convocation is on Wednesday, August 14th. It will take place at Lakota East High School. The program portion will begin at 8 o'clock, although the doors will open at 7:15. And our theme for this year is Together We Can. And so I think really it's a wonderful opportunity to bring all staff across the district together and really set the tone for the year about what we can partner on and how we can partner because together we really can do amazing things, whether we're talking about the board or our staff or our executive team, our students. And so really it's just a wonderful time to rally around and be excited about the school year. So that is up and coming. I also wanted to give you an update just about, you know, during the interview process, I had a superintendent entry plan and I wanted to give you an update about how that's going and how that's progressing. Part of that first section of that plan that I presented to you is around the Board of Education. I know in early August, we get to spend some time together and really talk about how we function as a team and kind of set that direction. So that's up and coming. Also, community engagement was a large part of that plan. And so we will be having listening and learning sessions throughout the entire fall semester. So really August through December, we've actually already had one with the executive team, but really it's an opportunity to meet with as many stakeholder groups as absolutely possible and really ask those groups the same three questions. And those three questions will be, you know, what are our strengths? What are our growth opportunities? And what do you need from me as a superintendent? And the end goal of that will be able to provide you with kind of ethnographic themes that rise to the surface, not only as a K-12 as a district, but also through subgroups. So if we need to know what's a parent perspective or maybe what's an elementary teacher's perspective, we can pull that data out and really have a conversation about that. And I think that will really set us up nicely, depending on what we would like to do with our next iteration of strategic plan. So those will, those dates will be coming out on the website, but after that, at our board retreat, you'll be able to give feedback to make sure we haven't missed any stakeholders. So you'll, you'll get an opportunity to look at that before we put that into full action. Another component of my entry plan was organizational capacity and alignment. So how do we function as an organization? What are the different roles and responsibilities? So I was fortunate enough to meet with all of the executive team members over the last couple of weeks, really to sit down and talk about the scope of their roles, their responsibilities, but also to really look at timely priorities for the next 30, 60, and 90 days so that we don't miss anything and that the work doesn't stop and that it's continuous in the transition. Also met with some more integral roles in the central office to make sure I understand their roles as well. So we have a good understanding just of, of different capacities and different responsibilities. And then part of that, they, they filled out a briefing document. And I love to see people's briefing documents because you kind of get in their brain and how they think. So lots of good linked documents and good time for me to review, not only just kind of documents that are created in the work and how we think and organize, but also really rich data to look at, everything from like student support tickets to building enrollments. So just really diving into that so that we have a really good scope of the work that's, that lays out before us. And then operations and finance, I spend a lot of time with Mr. Zink, so I get a lot of updates and you know, whether that's finance committee or looking at our, our forecast. And part of that we'll also be talking about master facilities. So really just getting into that work, but most excited about that community engagement piece that we have coming up because that I think will be a wonderful opportunity to really know what we love about our district and where we can grow and where we can continue to hone our, hone our skills. The other piece that I wanted to give you an update on is a safety update. On July 15th, Chris Passarge and myself, we met with the Westchester Police Department, the Butler County Sheriff's Department, and the Butler County Engineering Office. And really we, with that group, we went through each school in particular and we looked at the opportunities to, could we improve anything? Or were there some discussion points that maybe weren't as timely that we wanted to put for futuristic thinking? So we really went through each different school. We spent a lot of time, as, as we should have, on East Freshman Building because of recent events. And we really talked about four different prongs of a safety aspect that we could look at. One was about increasing the school zone. And so the documents that you have at your desk there are really a testament to that particular option. So what that would mean is that we already have a school zone there, but with applying for, and we've actually filled out the application, you see that there signed, we have applied to extend that 300 feet back. So we're extending the crosswalk so that it, so that people are aware they're in a school zone and they are in a school marking. So not only, once that's approved, or if that's approved, we would update the signage around that, we would update the markings on the street. So that is in progress. And so not only will you see the document that we completed to get that process started, but you also have a graphic there to show how that extension, what that would look like. I thought it might just help you to have that visual.
Thank you.
Some other opportunities that we talked about were rumble strips. So one thing that the police departments advised about rumble strips is that there is a reminder that they are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And that, you know, at 2:00 AM when things are quiet, they, they can produce some noise. So if we were, at this point we are not, but if we were to pursue rumble strips, their suggestion was to make sure that all residents in that surrounding area around East Freshman in the neighborhoods would sign off on that so that they understand what that would look like. And they recommended that we would not go forward with that unless all residents were comfortable. They've had some prior experiences in surrounding districts where that rumble strips were actually installed and then maybe six months later, residents were not quite as happy about the noise and they had to be removed. So that's one thing we could do. We haven't currently implemented that, but that is an option. The other thing is a speed limit. So right now it is 40 miles going eastbound and 50, 40 miles per hour going eastbound and 50 miles an hour going westbound. There actually was a speed study there years ago because the normal speed for a zone like that would be 45, so it was actually reduced to 40. They said we could certainly apply to do a speed study, but they did not think that that would probably come to fruition because we are not a city. So cities have the advantage of having a 35 mile per speed limit in some areas because we don't meet that definition. They thought that, they felt pretty strongly that, that they would probably hold at that 40 miles per hour as, as least as it would go. We could apply for that, but again, they thought the likelihood of that would be, would be probably pretty slim based on our definition of not being a city. The other thing, which we're actually going to do in, in coupling with the increasing the school zone and the crosswalk, would just be student, student education, right? We do that with our smallest students, student blitz, about how, student blitzes, about how you cross the street safely, you know, look both ways. Older students have distractions sometimes that younger students don't, right? With phones or peers or things like that. So working with communications to get that kind of information and back to school, working with high school principals, maybe junior high principals, to just reiterate that with some of our older students about not being distracted when you're crossing the street and really what that means. So at this time, particularly around East Freshman Building, the one thing that we have executed is again, increasing that school zone. As soon as we hear back from that, I will let you know. They thought that was very doable, you know, would be, would be enacted pretty quickly once that, that clears. There again are those other options about the rumble strips and the speed limit, but they thought the likelihood of those, or maybe the community perception might be a little, a little rough depending on the neighborhood. Is there any, that, that, there are other schools that we went through in detail, but really that was the focus of our conversation based on recent events. But again, we did talk about all schools to make sure that, that we were hearing all different voices about possibilities or what had worked or worked at different schools.
Any questions for Dr. Whitley?
A comment. I appreciate the update on convocation. The date is August 14th, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Oh my goodness, okay. Yeah, unfortunately I won't be here. I'll be on vacation from August 13th to August 20th. So I'm going to be absent and love to be there. Have to take, give my wife a treat. That is seven years of hanging, still hanging out with me. So our anniversary was April this year, so we planned a vacation to Mexico, Cancun. I won't be there unfortunately. Just want to make sure I have it on record that if I'm not seen, it's not that I don't want to.
Thank you for letting us know.
She'll be soaking in the sun.
Yeah. If hurricane allows.
Doug?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate the, the report from the, from the safety. We know there's a lot of things that people, you know, wanted, wanted to try to do and the reality is some of it is that in the end it, it would not work, which is, I'm glad we're getting the crosswalk extended. That should help a difference, make a difference. I remember when they did the speed study the first time when we opened this building and they said 45 and we got them down to 40, but.
If that's something we want to pursue, you know, we can think on that and get back to them, you know, the worst thing they can do is say no. But he said that is something if we want to explore, but again, based on his previous experience, but again, we can always try to do that.
And there is a cost to the speed study, correct?
There is.
It's a hefty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Help me understand, I thought you said that right now eastbound it's 40, but westbound it's 50?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, so even without a speed study, is it possible to get both directions changed to 40? Or is that not a possibility? Or is that something we could at least inquire, given it seems odd to me that the direction would be 40 one way and 50 the other? And perhaps since they allowed it to be 40 east, they would be willing to change it to 40 west?
I will follow up with the engineer because he had very detailed knowledge about that, those kind of studies. So I'll follow up with him and see if that's possible, if he thinks, like you said, we could at least get them the same regardless of the direction at 40. So I'll follow up and circle back.
My understanding is, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We can do that, I mean, we can ask that, but we can't do anything without a speed study first.
Yeah. And I, it's just interesting that they allowed it.
So I'll follow up on that and I'll get the exact cost also of what a speed study would and bring that back.
Right.
So we're aware.
I remember what they, remember what it was.
And I know there, was there discussion of a raised sidewalk? I know that had been thrown around as an idea. Is that anything that was considered or discussed or?
That was not discussed.
I mean, I don't mean like a bridge, because I, but just even just a slightly raised surface.
It was not. That did not come up at, at any building. That did not come up.
Interesting. Okay.
But I will add that to, to talk to him about, just to see.
If you would be able to ask the question.
Anything else? All right, hearing nothing, Mr. Zink.
Welcome Dr. Whitley to the front of the class. Good to have you up here. It's been fun working with you in this first month. Also, we would like to talk about the upcoming board retreat on August 5th, possibly setting that timeline from 4 to 5 so that we have a little bit more time. Let me know if that would work for everyone. And a summer shout out to the operations and tech departments for all the work they're doing around the district. Some of us are very, very busy when the kids are out getting ready for the upcoming year. So appreciate everything that both departments are doing and their staff. So that's all I have.
Great.
Sorry, I have a question. What, which of the dates do you, is it the first day or the second day?
First day. The first day is second half of the day and then the second day is the first half of the day.
Okay, so you want, the first day you wanted to?
Extend from 4 to 5.
So 1 to 5.
One hour more.
Just an hour more.
Yeah.
And then on the second day, we would be done at noon?
Yeah. On the second day, I have, I have.
Yeah.
All right. Any other further questions for Mr. Zink? All right, hearing none, I will move to the Butler Tech report, passing out the newsletters. I realized I had forgotten to give you May, so you have May and July here. My apologies, there's two. Butler Tech, we were able to focus at this meeting on adult education, which they kind of sometimes get overlooked a little. So they were looking, they were excited to be able to share all the amazing things that are happening within adult ed. So one of those things was, they almost shuttered adult ed several years ago because it went from losing $4.2 million to actually having revenue of $8.7 million in just five years. So it's been amazing transformation in what's happening in adult ed and the opportunities continue to abound. So they've invested, they just reinvest that money that they've made into additional programs and opportunities for all students across the district. So they've invested in tech, in the biomed expansion and the police academy expansion and redoing the training facility they have there. They've expanded the HVAC training. They've bought a police cruiser from Westchester. They've increased the number of drivers who are doing driver's ed in the cars. They now have three driver's ed cars that are being used. They now have different partners with different programs. Westchester Hospital is partnering with Butler Tech and they have a cohort that they are sending through adult ed that are taking them from medical assistance all the way to LPNs. They will have an RN program starting June 20, or January 2025. Right now, there's a one-year wait for paramedics because that program is doing very well. And again, they hope to continue to expand capacity. And adult ed, they're also similar to what we do with College Credit Plus with various colleges. They're now partnering with different high school students where they're able to take welding, medical assisting, and STNA training through Butler Tech as part of the adult ed in a similar manner to the way our students take part in College Credit Plus. So let's see, they've had 15,000 students per year and adult ed are touched by that program. So it's amazing how far that reach has grown. And they're looking to continue, they're, right now, the only programs that are at full capacity are paramedics, police, and fire. And welding still actually has capacity for adults. So while it's full in the secondary program, it is not full for adult ed. So you also have that in your little flyer of talking about adult ed, but again, amazing things are happening in all aspects of Butler Tech. So with that, we'll move to committee times and dates, just to say that they are on our, with board docs and with our agenda. So if you'd like to see any future committee meetings or board meetings, those are all listed there. And now we will move to treasurer's recommendation action items. We have approval of board minutes, A, approval of monthly financial reports, B, approving a contract with Sun Life for dental insurance, D is Aflac, C, or E rather, is Cancer, Cancer Expert Now, F Samaritan to fund, Samaritan Fund Calendar Year 2025, G as Flores Cobra and FMLA Administration, and H is Motion to Approve in Advance. So do I have a motion to approve A through H?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Adam, would you like to share some details on all of those items?
We have a lot of details on a lot of, of these items. The Sun Life, it purchased Dental Care Plus, so that is just a replacement and it's a three-year contract with a lock rate for the administrative services. We are self-insured on dental. Then we have the Aflac supplemental benefits and group life insurance, the group life insurance, that is the board portion that all employees get per contract and policy. Then we have Cancer Expert. Now, this is a new initiative that was recommended to us by our TPA, Huran. They recommended this because it is a service where if we have staff who do have cancer, their doctors can use this resource to, it's, it's actually directing them to experts in the specific cancer that the employee may have. So this is kind of an added benefit to those employees or dependents on the plan that are battling cancer. Samaritan Fund, this is the second year for that plan. That is a, it's kind of a supplemental benefit that helps employees that would qualify to be redirected to an additional different plan. Then Flores, that's for FMLA and Cobra Administration. That's new this year. That is essentially employees when they are going on an FMLA leave. This is a third-party administrator that will help manage the documents and make sure we have the forms and keep the approval process flowing clean and all that. And then the last one, that was a late ad, apologize for that. This is the approve of advances. When we advance at the end of the fiscal year, we have to advance back. So this is just flipping those back. We have to have board approval to do that. So any questions that anyone has on these?
Yes, I have a question on cancer. It's a cancer expert now. Where is that resources coming from and who is paying for that?
That comes from our self-insured insurance fund because it's a benefit for the employees that are paying for that insurance. So they, they also, it's, it's supposed to be a, a program that will have a, a much more efficient treatment to the, to the, to whatever the diagnosis is so that that's where they believe that it saves money and it's a guarantee of the savings. So it's kind of a, a win-win, I guess. And it's not in a way that they'll just like try to recommend it cheaper, but it, it's supposed to help eliminate some of the experimental testing to get to the source of where these problems are lying by redirecting these questions to experts within that specific type of cancer.
Okay, is this a summary, can I form? Give me more information about that.
Yeah, what the Samaritan Fund is, is for catastrophically chronic employees, they can apply. People that we, we've recommended, people that would apply for this would be anybody that every year they always meet their maximums, you know, they always meet the max out of pockets, things of that nature. Then they apply to this service and the service will then determine if they meet the criteria. If they do meet the criteria, then they will find them a not less than what Lakota has to offer plan. So it will get them actually off of the Lakota plan and onto a different, absolutely no cost to the employee for the entire duration of the calendar year. This year was our first year that we had that and it was, we had a couple of staff that reached that max. We also have a supplemental insurance for the, I'm not saying it the right way, it's the, it's like the max out of pocket for our plan that's $250,000. So people that would qualify for that, we can then give them this guaranteed, all expense paid if they qualified. So it's stop-loss insurance, sorry. Hopefully then it will result in better stop-loss premiums for us, which are then rolled forward to all of the employees as well as these employees not having to have expense out of pocket if they did qualify. So the goal right now, we had two, we had two people that had went over to that. We're hoping that maybe in calendar year 25, we could get it to five total, maybe three extras.
Okay. Thank you.
Just kind of a way that, it's a, it's a tool that we've used to kind of offset and kind of stabilize since we've had a lot of heavy expense since we've went to self-insured three years ago. Sometimes I believe that these experimental type programs that we've put in place, had we not switched to self-insured and then had some really rough years since we've done that, these might be things that we might think that wouldn't be worth looking into. But, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to help stabilize this plan for, for all of our staff.
Kelly?
Thank you, Adam, for exploring a lot of these kind of newer, more innovative ways to not only provide better customer service for our employees, but potential cost savings for all of them as well, given that we're self-insured now. So I think those are great opportunities to take advantage of.
All right, with no further discussion, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Moving into superintendent's recommendations, we have approval of personnel items, approval of field trips, approve resolution declaring transportation impractical and approving donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Dr. Whitley, would you care to provide us any details?
So personnel, we are working diligently to make sure that we have all personnel in place for the 24, 25 school year. You'll also see the document about the board policy guidelines, the AGs there in front of you. That's really just title changes. There's nothing drastic on that. It's just really some nomenclature pieces that we updated. And then this miscellaneous rates of pay, you actually approved this last month as well, but if you look on the back, there is an addition. This is around the science of reading. This is from the Department of Education and Workforce that has a requirement that all staff, all administrators, all staff do a module through their safe account, through their professional license account. And the state says that they will have payment for that. So this is just outlining that miscellaneous pay rate that we will have for the year, for, for the upcoming year. So then moving on to field trips, the first one you have is really just a tie to our eighth grade curriculum. Hopewell Jr. is traveling to Washington DC. What I really liked about this when I was reviewing it is that, you know, if this is approved tonight, they will create a student committee and have student voice about what that agenda looks like and to make sure that students feel like they have part of that planning. How exciting to be able to help them in planning that trip that is tied to curriculum and the eighth grade standard. So I thought that was super exciting. The other field trip you have there is athletic-based. It is a holiday invitational in Tampa, Florida, and those are sponsored by Fundraising Dollar, so that's not a cost to the district, did want to note that. Then you also have the resolution declaring transportation impractical. You might be thinking, wait a minute, I saw this on the June 27th meeting. Well, that was because that was for last school year, 23, 24. The one you're seeing tonight is for the upcoming school year for 24, 25. So really, we do this at the beginning of the school year to do all the students that we know are going to enter the school year under this resolution. And then you will also see it again at the end of the year, like you did in June, for the kids or for the students who have done that throughout the school year to declare transportation impractical. So this is really tied to Ohio Revised Code 3327.02, that if the district determines that transportation is impractical, they work with the parent through a letter, both to the parent and the state boards to kind of work through that pieces. So the ones you're seeing tonight are for the 24, 25 school year. The ones you approved last month were to end out the 23, 24 school year.
Thank you for that clarification.
And then last but not least are donations. You know, we are always very thankful and appreciative to anyone who makes donations to the district. So you have an itemized list there of the various things. I remember Mr. Zink a couple of meetings ago, just talking about at the end of the school year, what that donation amount really looked like and it was very, very impressive. And again, very, very thankful for the community support that we have through donations.
Great. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question on transportation impractical. Do we have a projection for next year, how many students are going to be impacted?
It's on your attached.
So it is, it is the list attached to that, the secondary list right here. These are all the students that we have thus far.
Attached where?
It's attached on your computer. On your computer. To the agenda.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I can give this to you.
I didn't see that, appreciate that.
And so this is what we know, we'll start the school year and then again, we keep a running list and we'll bring that back to you at the end of the school year next year to catch all of those people who, who maybe made a different decision during the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. I always appreciate, I think we all do, the opportunity that our kids have to do the trips and take advantage of the learning that happens there. So I, we always hear great stories back from those, so thank you for that. All right, hearing no further discussion, if you'd please call the roll, Adam?
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right, and we're already at closing comments. So Mr. D, would you like to start?
Hi, Dr. Whitley, thank you so much. We are excited to have you on board. Now, today is your first meeting. I'm looking forward to great things that we're going to do together. Maybe asking a lot of questions, please pardon me because I always need clarification so that I know what I'm doing most of the time. And I'm also looking forward to our retreat. I don't know how it's being planned, how we're going to do it yet, any details? I don't know, but I look to that. Besides that, I'm looking towards the new year, new school year, expecting the kids to come back with excitement. I'll be happy to be, to be available to visit kids and see their first day back.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Horton?
So really excited for the board retreat coming up as well, as well as the fact that we've got less than a month before school starts, which my kids are very aware of. What I'll say is, I'll use this opportunity to just reiterate the call for volunteers in our schools. You know, over the past couple of years, we've seen the amount of volunteers in our schools decline, and I love the theme that you and Betsy have come up with, Dr. Whitley, for this year, Together We Can, and I think that can help feed into some of that call for volunteerism in our schools. So really excited to see that develop. And for anyone who's listening to this, if you haven't reached out to your PTSO or PTO in your schools, please do so now. They are actively planning their, their programs for the fall and can use as many able-bodied hands, minds, finger clickers, whatever it takes, as well, as well as reaching out to Lakota Cares Organization as well for some of the ancillary activities that they do against our school events, so that's it.
All right, I'm going to go to you, Mrs. Casper.
Just also reiterate, welcome to, to the big kid table. Welcome to the grown-up table, we're excited to have you here. We are looking forward to great things happening in our district, and we are excited about the beginning of the school year. I got all excited today when I walked in because I saw the buffing machines, you know how I like the shiny floors on the first day of school. Just to reiterate, reiterate a little bit of what Doug said too, when you're reaching out to your PTSO, I know sometimes people are nervous to do that, thinking, oh my goodness, I'm going to be in charge of, you know, the whole school carnival. There are jobs for everyone, from someone who has an hour a week to someone who wants to chair something. So I know that most of our PTSOs are desperate for volunteers to run programs that benefit the kids in their building. And sadly, some of the things we heard last year is that this coming year, if they can't find the volunteers that they need, some programs and activities that our students love may not take place. So take a minute just to reach out to your PTSO. That's it.
Mr. Zink?
No comment. I'm going to, seeing this clock and how quick this meeting's going, I don't want to get in the way of progress, so I'm going to pass.
I was thinking about.
Dr. Whitley?
No, I'm just, I just want to reiterate, I'm so excited to be here. It's been a wonderful few weeks with the team and the central office, and you know, when we were coming up with the theme, I, I truly believe in my heart that together we really can do wonderful things. And I am just excited to see children and to see staff and to be in buildings and really partner, so I think it's going to be a really, really exciting year.
Great. Thank you to everyone for all their hard work over the summer. I know some of our teachers take a much-needed break, but then they're also getting right back in and digging in for what the possibilities are for next year. So thank you for not only our teaching staff, but all the support staff that's working tirelessly to prepare the buildings. As Kelly said, those floors don't buff themselves, they're busy doing all of that work, as well as our administrators who work the year around and making sure our students have the very best opportunities. So thank you to everyone, and again, I reiterate, I, we're so thrilled, I can't believe we're almost at that point where the school year's starting again. But we all know that the possibilities are endless with this team that we've got, and we look forward to great things, so thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Go ahead.
Nobody wants to go.